It's a call to order. This meeting will come to order. The time is 4:00 PM on Thursday, September 24th, 2020. This meeting is being held remotely using this Cisco WebEx virtual meeting platform. I'm Kay Kendall, Chairperson of the Commission on Arts and Humanities. I'm going to call the roll. Alma? Gretchen?
Here.
Mariah?
Here.
Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Jose? Jose may not make it. Derek?
Yes.
Rona?
Here.
Cece?
I'm here.
Thank you. Quanise? Stacy? Natalie? Cora?
Cora may not make it.
Kimber? And me. Jose may not make it. Quanise? Stacy? Yes. Stacy? Natalie? And Kimber. I want to remind everyone to mute or be very quiet. So is Alma there? Right now we have one. We just do have a quorum. And I see Quanise just came on, so that's even better.
No, this is Alma.
And Alma there too, great. So we're just missing Stacy and Natalie and Kimber. They may come on.
Stacy is on.
I don't know why I'm not getting a link.
Okay, well, we can hear your voice. Hi Stacy, good to see everybody. And everybody. Okay, so we have a quorum. This meeting is held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Before we proceed, I'd like to read the following land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hopes of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We began this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nkocheteng and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this Arts Commission. Thank you. That, Quanise. Now we're going to have an adoption of the agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And approval of the minutes. We have four sets of minutes to approve. The special meeting minutes from June 15th, the regular meeting from June 18th, the special meeting minutes from August 13th, and the special meeting minutes from September 3rd. Does anyone second the approval of those minutes?
Second.
Okay, and may all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any dissenting votes? All right, Stan, thank you very much. I want to welcome Charles Hicks. He's here visiting us today, and he's here to make some public comments. Mr. Hicks, the floor is yours. Are you here? Is Charles Hicks here?
There's three people on the phone, but I, and they're all unmuted, so he should be able to speak up. Tell me.
Hello?
Chuck?
Yes.
Chuck, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Great. You're up, we're all ears.
Hello, Michael, Michael, I'm Michael. Michael, I want to call. What, you need me to do now, speak now?
Yes, it's your turn.
Oh, okay. Hi. My name is Chuck Hicks, and I run the DC Black History Celebration Committee. And I'm hoping that we can talk about and make plans about events that are scheduled for Black History Month for next year. I think in lieu of the many things that have been happening in the city in terms of the protests and the mayor's painting of the Black Matter and things like that, it would be helpful if we could plan for the Commission and DC Black History Celebration Committee to talk about planning some events together for that. One of the things that I'd like to ask to request that perhaps that the committee will do a banner that would say, "Commission on Arts and Humanities celebrates Black History Month," and hang it in front of the building. And also, I spoke briefly to Jeff about the idea that perhaps we could put a call out to public space for public art. Do some artwork about celebrating Black History in February. I'd also like to talk a little bit more about improving our Black History calendar, making it more comprehensive, so that we could make it more colorful, but reach out and include a lot of other agencies that are planning things for Black History while as reaching out to the churches in the community to expand our Black History Month. And lastly, I'd like to request that the Commission look at allocating a budget for the Black History event. We usually could do a major event sometime in February, sometime it's near the end. And we didn't do one last year, and I have a problem with budget and timing. So I'm hoping that the Commission will allocate some money in advance so that we could plan an event at, perhaps once again, at the Lincoln Theater. We had talked about last year doing a thing called Black Broadway. And maybe this year, we could reconsider that. An inclusive in that could be some stuff about poetry and dance and art in terms of embracing what the city has done and how it celebrates Black History Month. So that's my request for the, to the Commission.
Those are some really good ideas, Chuck. I really appreciate your bringing to us, and we will take them back to committee and talk about them. Thanks.
Okay, and if it's okay, I can, I have a copy of this and email this to you all, if that will be helpful.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you so much.
Who should I send it to?
You can send it to me, you can send it to Heran, and we will make sure everyone else gets it.
All right, I certainly will. I'll get that done tomorrow and get it to everybody. And I do appreciate the support that the Commission has done throughout the years working with Black History on the many projects that we've been able to deposit together. I just think that this year, Black History should be very special under the circumstances of all the things that are happening in this city, including the virus. So thank you so much, and I should get this to you all next week, I mean, no, tomorrow.
I think it's very apropos that you brought this up right now, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, okay. Part of my report is that I want to let you all know that I'm really, really pleased that the Council passed the legislation that we cared so very much about and gave permission for us to give part of our FAB money for rent and mortgage relief. Specifically, it says that during fiscal year 2021, these grants, meaning the ones in FAB, which is facilities and buildings, may be used, if approved by the Commission, to pay rent or mortgage expenses for the operation of a grant recipient's arts or humanities-related home-based office in the district, and rent or mortgage expenses for the operations of a grant recipient's space in the district used to produce or publicly present arts or humanities-related work. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity this year for us to give added relief to our grants community, and it's just really a good thing. I think it was a good thing when we proposed it. Now several months have gone by. I think we all really feel it will make a difference. So I appreciate the Council for passing that legislation, and I wanted to let you all know. The applications for FAB will be going out soon. Thanks.
Yes. That's the legislation that we passed. We had three requests on.
We did, and this is the one that they addressed or passed.
The other ones were not addressed at all.
I'm looking right now at, well, I mean, the short answer is no. We, we wanted, I'm trying to break this down, sorry, I'm looking at some notes.
Okay, if you'd like me to, I can.
Let me through some things. Carl, do you want to answer that, or you more?
Yes, sure. Well, as Kay said, we got the big thing that we wanted. And that was the authority to be able to issue grant awards that could be, that can be used by the recipients to pay arts and/or humanities-related office spaces and rent and mortgage for those office spaces and their performance spaces, and arts and humanities-related expenses connected to their home offices and performance spaces. That's something brand new, and that was the big thing we asked for. We, in our, we filed an emergency bill, a temporary bill, and a permanent bill. And the Council granted the, well, a revised version of the emergency and temporary. So we got the big thing we wanted. So that's a win, a win with the footnote. The footnote is that we also asked that the Council adopt our language that would have won, provided that members of the COC were not eligible to apply for this FAB money in FY21. We also asked that they would revise our Establishment Statutes in a way that required all recipients of this grant money, if you, if they were not going to be able to spend it all in fiscal year, in the fiscal year, that they would return back to us by a certain date, any monies that they couldn't spend. And then we also, let's see, I'm going down through the, my redline version of this. That was the big thing in this, the, we also asked the Council to revise the section of our Establishment Statutes that deals specifically with our New Arts and Humanities Fund. And what specifically we asked the Council to do, what they didn't do, but they may do down the road, is to add a provision that allows us to, when we receive those returned grant monies that the recipient couldn't spend before the end of the fiscal year, we asked the Council to adopt a new provision that allows us to take those returned monies and place them in our Arts and Humanities Fund. And the reason that ultimately will be important is because monies in those funds are not swept back into the district's general fund at the end of the fiscal year, but they stay in our Arts and Humanities Fund. The Council did not deal, did not act on that request, but the context is, we made the request in emergency and temporary bills. We can, our permanent bill that we also filed with the Council, we can fight, we can fight when the Council schedules a hearing on the permanent bill. If it does, we argue for those things. Then the very last part, the last thing we asked the Council for was to add into the section of our Establishment Statutes that deals specifically with our Humanities Grants Program. We asked them to include a new paragraph, and it basically said what we asked above with regard to FAB, and that is, whoever receives these humanities-related grant funds, if the recipient can't, and knows that they can't spend all the award money by the end of the fiscal year, they promised to give it back to us by a certain date. And then the final thing in that section that has not yet been acted on is this statement, that the grant managing entity that is referenced in the section, and for this year that would be Humanities DC, shall not be able, should not be eligible to receive from the Commission any grant funds that are awarded by the Commission to its grantees for general operating support. So that, in a nutshell, are the remaining items that we asked for in our emergency and temporary bills. The Council did not act on those, but instead acted on the main thing we wanted. I have not gotten a specific, yet have not gotten a specific explanation as to why, although I've been in discussions with the Council's, General Counsel. But it just makes sense to all of us that what happened is that, what we asked for because of the existence of the COC, and we all know that they've been lobbying the Council, I'm sure the Council looked at these bills and saw that it could be controversial because the COC likely will, probably already has been, been fighting, pushing back on these requests. So the bottom line is, if we get these other things, we'll have to get them in the context of the Council's handling of our permanent bill, which is almost identical to the emergency and temporary bills. So these issues, these wants, it's not that we're not, I mean, that we will never be able to get them. The Council just made the decision right now because they need hearings on those to just give us immediately what we told the Council we need immediately, and that is the authority to make these grant awards that could be used for rent and mortgage.
Derek, I just, I've got the long explanation, Carl, for something that I think that we should celebrate, which is the ability to use some of this money for rent and mortgage. I think the short version of what you were saying, Carl, is that there's a difference in what we could maybe get done in an emergency timeframe and what we might be able to do if we spend a long time this year, it's up to the addressing changes we think would be important and presented in a different timeframe.
Yes, okay, your characterization of what the Council did, I agree with. It was a win for us. The big thing we asked for, the authority to make these new types of grants. The Council, the Council gave us that authority. The Council did not have to act on either our emergency bill or temporary bill, or they could have acted on it at some point down the road, or not at all. They did. They didn't give us everything we wanted, they gave us the big thing we wanted. This is a win with that footnote that I gave a minute ago.
Kay, can I add something?
Yes.
Derek, just so you know, it really, it, just to make a footnote, it really wasn't the Council. It came from Phil Mendelson and his office. He took out, he took our first paragraph and just chopped it up and gave us some FAB money and said the COC had to be included. That's the long and short of it. But it really was Phil, because it was not the whole Council, because it never went to committee, and it was never really voted on. So I think Carl is right in his summation, and thank you, Paul, because I think my Task Force Committee worked really hard with you and Heran on this. But I do think the COC had a role in this. I think, Carl, you're absolutely right. I think, you know, we weren't successful in counteracting any efforts to get our full bill approved.
And just one last comment. I wanted to publicly thank Rona because as we were bouncing back, she was heavily involved when I was actually drafting the legislation, and so she handled this as much as anybody. But also, since the Council took its action last week, and Rona has been on the phone with folks, the Council trying to help us understand what's going on, you know, how we should proceed, so I just wanted to give a public thanks to Rona. Thank you, I appreciate it. But again, this is a win. This is not a loss, this is a win. They gave us what we, the big thing we wanted. It's a win.
Well, the other thing that, when we have an annual committee, and that annual committee forms an opinion, and then the Commission votes on that opinion, I just need follow-up as to what occurred with it, so that we would know that that work done by the committee and the vote by the Commission vote had been followed through with. Whether what's more important than the other is based on individual. But I didn't necessarily say that that is the most important thing in that particular legislation that we put forth. And yes, I'm glad we got something out of this, but I also want to know in the entirety what happened with it, because that's the only way we can move forward and understand.
Derek, I tried. I'm having a hard time hearing you. I think we got the gist. And I think that the bottom line is that, what, as I said, that if we want to make other legislative changes, we have time now to do it. We were trying to do something in a quick timeframe between June and now, and we have now months and months to talk about it in committee and reposition ourselves.
But Derek, to answer your specific question, I tried and to no avail was able to find out why our whole bill wasn't considered and how it was chopped up. So I just want you to know that, you know, I haven't gotten anywhere with getting any information. Why?
Kay, may I jump in? This is Heran. So my understanding, temporary bills don't go to committee within Council. So this may well have been a decision on their part to push through what they could without bouncing it back to their, the committee of the whole in this case. Is what I'm thinking happened is that this was the part that could be pushed through within their time.
I think that's, I think that's very likely, but I think Derek and I agree with him, and I think with Carl's excellent summation, we all would like, I'd like to know, because we work so hard on this committee, just ask the question. And I know that the question has not been allowed to be asked, and I want to know what happened to the bill. That's it. It's just, I understand we're going to do it later, but to Derek's direct point, what happened? And there's been no answer to that.
Rona? I'm surprised at that. If there's anything else to be said on that, I'm going to call on Heran for her.
No, there's no, I have something to say. I got on this call, I've been listening, and first of all, let me just be the person who disagrees. It's not a victory. It's just another opportunity for the COC to take more money from people who need it more, and they get more, and they get no accountability. They have accountability in there. They are still being white privileged people who are getting a lot of money without any accountability, and other people are not getting it. The more they get, the less everybody else gets. So the fact that they are eligible for additional money, that takes away from everybody else. That's what this whole task force is for. Everybody's patting themselves on the back for yet another example of inequities. And I do believe, and if you're on the phone, I know for a fact that the COC made the move. I know that, but I'm not going to say anything about it beyond all the other information we're gathering. This is not a victory. This is more of the same.
All right, does anyone else have an opinion they need to express before you move to Heran's report? All right, Heran, would you please?
Sure, my report is very brief. As most of you know, we're in our sort of final push to end our FY20 fiscal year and to begin with preparing for FY21 announcements on October 1st with a few grant programs. The two short, brief announcement reports pieces that I have are that the district remains in Phase 2 of reopening. We haven't moved to Phase 3, as you know. And then the second piece has to do with the Local Hatch Act. The election season is upon us in November, and so we are hoping to remind both staff members and commissioners that we are governed by the Local Hatch Act. I know in my report, hopefully most of you have it in hand, there's a longer sort of readout on the do's and don'ts around the Hatch Act. And as it relates to, you know, online meetings that we would be having, that would involve, you know, physical attire or buttons and insignia for political campaigns that we would not be allowed to display. The list is pretty extensive, it's a couple of pages. It includes local and federal Hatch Act instructions. So I just wanted to share that in time for the November activity. As the year winds down and we come to the next fiscal year in October, I'll have a more extensive report to share that looks at sort of the whole year in retrospect. Thank you.
Heran, where is that list? Quickly, have we all been sent it to look at?
We have. Patrick, are you able to share it by any chats, or since you're the administrator?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, just to take a quick look? Thank you.
Do that real quick, yeah.
Could I just say that basically, the pieces that you sent out are for a lot of government employees in terms of people who work in the office. As a Commissioner, we are allowed to participate in political activities, cannot sponsor anything that asks for money. But we can, we can have meet and greet, we can campaign. We can.
Would everyone please mute except for Mary Ann?
We can, we can go to events, we cannot ask anyone for money, we can be outside campaigning, we can participate in a fundraiser, just so long as we do not sponsor it. And I just had a meet and greet for a candidate. We did not ask for money. We did not in any way talk about fundraising. So, you know, I don't think that people should feel, this list is somewhat intimidating. I think it's important that we, as residents of the District of Columbia, get involved in political activities and in support candidates that we feel strongly about, but that we do it in the context of what is allowable. And when you look at this list, it looks like you can't do anything.
Well, anyway, Heran, if we could, now, send to our emails.
Yes, we'll send the list. And there are, yeah, there are provisions for what are acceptable. Commissioners are considered public officials for, so they're included in the Hatch Act. It is pretty detailed, so I'll send it out again, Mary Ann, and there are things that are allowed, of course.
I appreciate that. Do you have anything else for your report, Heran?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then Cece, can you do the finance report, please?
Hi, hi, everyone. I just wanted to say, I was out of town for most of the last few weeks since our meeting. I was not able to connect with Brian, but I will be due so shortly. I know we have a big docket as far as the grants, so I respectfully defer my time to Gretchen.
Okay, thank you. Well, next, actually, it's not Gretchen, next is Public Art, and that is Alma. Alma, would you?
Sure.
On behalf of the Public Art Committee, I'm pleased to bring forward for board consideration, the Public Art Building Communities' Grant Funding Recommendations. PABC Grant Program supports individual artists and organizations in their efforts to design, fabricate, and install new temporary or permanent works of public art that connect artists and their artwork with communities. Public art is defined as artwork in any media installed on locations that is accessible to the public without cost and in an exterior, outdoor location, free of encumbrances. Permanent public art is defined as existing for duration of at least five years without regular maintenance, and temporary projects must demonstrate duration of less than two years. Opportunity is open to experienced artists or arts-related professionals, that is, presenters, producers, or educators, 18 years of age or older, and a current resident of Washington DC, as well as to DC-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations or DC Business Improvement Districts or Community Improvement District as defined by the Department of Small and Local Business Development. For FY21, the commission decided not to require a one-for-one cash match for organizations, but limit the grant amount to $125,000 for nonprofit organizations and 150 for bids. If the total project budget is greater than the grant request, the organization must demonstrate the match for the difference. So the allocated budget in FY21 was $488,750,000. And on the screen, you can see the comparison between 18, 19, 20, and FY21. I want to thank Alyssa Maru, who was the grant manager and who put together the panel as well as the day of adjudication. The cutoff on this was, there was no cutoff review. All six eligible, by that I mean, none were eliminated ahead of time. So all six eligible applications were adjudicated and ranked according to score. We, the panel recommended, and the Public Art Committee agreed to approve five proposals to receive a grant. Three individual organizations and bids are included. Public art projects are funded in total based on the applicant's request, up to the maximum allowable amount by cohort. Individuals up to 50,000, organizations up to 125,000, and bids up to 150,000. The total recommended request was $488,750,000. As I said before, the individuals were awarded $88,750,000 and organizations $400,000,000. So are we going to put up the spreadsheet? That just shows, yeah. On here, on the left, you can see the scores. And you'll see, note that between five and six, there was a large gap in scores. So the panel recommended, and again, the Public Art Committee agreed to support the five shown here in light green. And I'm happy to answer any questions and recommend this for funding for FY21.
You've recommended it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I second.
Okay, thank you, and welcome Jose. So now, would there be any discussion?
I have a question. This is Juanese. I see for the number one spot, we gave 111%. And so we gave more than what was requested. Was there a recent find at?
No, Juanese, we didn't give the extra 11%. They were required to provide that.
If I may, I'm sorry, if I may, on this one. This is Lauren speaking. So in this instance, the grantee or the applicant was a new person and felt that they needed to, they weren't fully paying their artists. And the panel felt that the artist needs to be fully compensated for their work and not donate some of their services. And so that's the difference. And since the funding request was beneath the 50,000 and the amount that their artists were donating services would still be under the 50,000, the panel recommended that the project be funded so that all of the artists were being compensated and not donating their time. And that was the basis on which the committee agreed to that.
And was that language communicated to them once they know that they've received the reward?
Yes, we would communicate that to them. We would communicate that to them.
Okay.
Did you say that all of the applicants that submitted proposals were rated and ranked? Because I don't see anything, everything just.
Okay, so those in the light green are the ones that the panel and the, well, the committee recommended. The one in gray was the one that was not recommended. The one with no shading, those were ones that were deemed ineligible. And as we always show with these funding recommendations, we show all of the applicants and how they either ranked or didn't rank. So the ones that were not shaded were deemed ineligible and were not evaluated by the, were not adjudicated.
It just seems very, too heavy.
Well, this is, you know, some of these are based on where the artist is. And generally, the project's in the same area. Sometimes it's not. I will say that for this grant round, this year, it was very different than our normal pattern as all of the grants were, just because we didn't know what was happening with the pandemic. This grant application went up before the district had it shut down. And then there was the shutdown, and then the commission was adjudicating and talking about, you know, what we were going to do. How could we pivot? How could we be supportive and helpful to grantees so that they could continue and do sustainable work? And the recommendation was made that if we reduce and remove the match, it would make it more accessible for nonprofit organizations to apply. And then there were the individuals. So, you know, there were a lot of late changes, a lot of different things happened. But, you know, this is a very broad mix of applicants and proposals and designs. And given everything that we've been through, I think, you know, this is a robust list. You know, this is a tough project, a tough application, because everything has to be completely in place. All you need is the funding to execute. So it's a very, you have to get your approvals from, you know, the property owner. You have to get letters from DDOT for open space. You need to get letters from DCRA. You need to understand what's the permitting that's involved and so that you can build your, and get community support, and also meet with your ANC. So all these applications, all these, those that have been recommended and the six that were adjudicated all met that criteria. The ones that are in the unshaded area were missing various elements of the criteria for this grant.
And Lauren, what you said, you know, what you said is great, but all of that stuff that you just named is barriers. And so, Mary Ann, every time we go through these recommendations, Mary Ann is always the first one to bring up the words. And I think you listing all of those barriers, we have to figure out ways where we can continue to stretch across the city so that we are making effective recommendations for this, so.
Right, so for, yes, and I appreciate that. For this particular grant program, the way this particular grant program is designed and the fact that these grants have to be executed within a fiscal year, you have to have all these things in place. It takes a lot of time to, and there are things that we're looking at in terms of expanding so that it is broader, and there are other ways to fund public art projects. But for this particular grant program, the way it is designed, you have to have everything in place. And most of these projects are going to take, you know, they don't have a full 12 months to execute it. It's really about eight or nine months to execute it. So that's why we, you know, the way it's designed. So we have some ideas of things that we can do. I hear exactly what you're saying, Juanese, to provide a greater opportunity for, you know, for more people and more organizations to apply for public art installation projects. So as well noted, and we understand that.
Lauren, we've gone through this, and we've talked about this before. And I think we really have to make an effort. So that we, there is lots of space in Ward 7 and 8 and parts of 5, where we can have, you know, beautiful murals. And we really have got to.
Yes.
To bring, to help these organizations comply and get all the pieces together.
Sure.
I mean, we help people with grants. We help them when they need to have a statement rewritten and all these other things. But we have to do the same thing in public art, because I've been saying this now for a while.
And we do. And, Mary Ann, we do. And we do work with applicants. And we actually had started a conversation with Main Streets to help talk to Main Streets about how, for them, one, to know about this program and how they can apply. If you look at previous years, we've had robust applications and installations in Ward 7, in Ward 8, in Ward 5. This is just cyclical, you know, and we generally have an application from every single ward represented. This is just a snapshot for this year. And we are doing a lot of outreach to, you know, to work with people who are interested in enhancing their community, you know, conducting workshops, providing matchups between artists and people who have ideas. It's a lot involved in this, and we want to help people to be successful.
Yeah, I appreciate all that, Lauren. But, you know, I see, actually, on the news, a lot of individuals who are doing wonderful murals around very current issues, whether it's Black Lives Matter and some of the political things that are very important. And the way we operate, we just don't give an opportunity to fund or to help any of those artists.
Actually.
They have to go through this whole, let me finish. They have to go through this whole long process. And I really hope that we can find a way to respond a little bit quickly and give some money, if it's just the supplies, if it has to come through fellowship grant money or some other way, so that we can help some artists doing these wonderful. I mean, when you go downtown and you go to some of the areas that are boarded up and they're wood covering all the stores, people have done wonderful, wonderful mural. We had nothing to do with. And I think, you know, we're losing out on the opportunity to really help a lot of mural artists.
Well, we have some great ideas, and I thank you for that, Mary Ann. We have some great ideas on how we can pivot and be more nimble for the remaining of fiscal year 21. And so this was based on an application that was released in March. And so that's this result. That's just, you know, one of many grant programs that we hope to implement this year.
We have to vote? Kay, you're muted. Okay.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you. I'm going to call the roll to see how the vote goes to pass the funds for these arts recommended. Alma, do you vote yes or no? Gretchen? Gretchen, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mariah?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
I'm going to pass.
Okay. Jose? Jose, are you there?
Sorry, Kay, I had to, okay, yes.
Thank you. Derek?
Yeah.
I'm going to keep you muted. Please mute again.
Yeah.
Rona?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Juanese?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Cora?
She had to leave.
Thank you. Kimber? Okay, that passes. That's great. Do you have anything else to put forth, Alma?
No, that's the end of it.
Sorry, Kay, as a point of order, I think you have to either, don't you have to abstain? You have to vote. If you pass, is that an abstention?
Yeah.
No, no, oh, I passed. I took it as an abstention, yes.
Just double checking. Thank you.
Right, I think that's just another word for that, I think. So now we'll go to Grants Committee. And Gretchen?
Okay, hello, everyone. If you need to stretch, I want you to do it now, because I really need your attention for the rest of this call. This is a lot to focus on. So I'm going to assume, since nobody's screaming, "I need to stretch", that I've got your attention. Okay, what I'm going to review first is the recommendations. And then for, excuse me, put education first. Put AHEP. I'm going to do that one first. Thank you. This is the education program grant funding recommendations. First, I'll go through the rationale behind it, and then David will take us through the spreadsheet. Okay, so Arts and Humanities Education Projects for in-school and out-of-school. The grant program description supports in-school and out-of-school time Arts and Humanities projects for children and youth in preschool through high school settings. The grant also supports professional development opportunities for classroom educators. The project must target DC-based educators, instructional staff, or teaching artists. Organizations may apply for the project support of up to $20,000. And the one-to-one match requirement was removed for FY21. Generally, we have a match requirement because of all of the, everything that people are faced with right now. We've removed the match. So you want to scroll up a little bit? Okay, thank you. FY20 versus 21. AHEP saw a significant increase in the number of applicants, which is really wonderful. We went from 26 to 45 for two reasons. GOS recipients that identify as arts education organizations may now apply for AHEP. And in spring of 2020, it was decided that organizations that were headquartered in 1 through 6, but offering programming in Ward 7 and 8, would no longer be eligible to apply. but offering programming in Ward seven and eight would no longer be eligible to apply to East of the River Grants. The decision was made at that time by full vote that in order to be in each of the River grantee, you needed to live east of the river. So that's Ward seven and eight. So several of the arts education organizations that were previously funded through East of the River migrated to this particular grant. And so we ended up with 15 of the 45 applicants being new to this particular grant, which I think is fantastic. What we're going to be asking you to do is to vote on Scenario A or Scenario B. We are recommending Scenario A. And as you can see, it's an increase in the amount of total money that was awarded versus FY20, 19, and 18. We ended up with two panels. Can we scroll a little more, please? Whoops. In-school Professional Development 20 and Out-of-School 25. David Markey was the Grants Manager and the Commissioner-Convenor was Rona Wolf-Friedman. Please scroll. Okay, ranking of award justification. Roll scores were converted to percentages based on the applicant's score relative to its peers. So for instance, if the highest score was 81, we made that 100 in terms of just looking down the, the list and, and making it fair to everyone and looking at it logically. Awards are allocated by applying that percentage to the applicant's requested amount. David, do you, we have Scenario A and Scenario B here, but I'd rather you talk about this as we're looking at the chart itself.
Great. No problem. Patrick, do you want to bring the Excel spreadsheet up?
Need to really multiply that one. Some more, some more, some more, so people can see it.
And Patrick, we can look at the first one. Yeah, just move that one up a little bit. We'll look at the in-school first. So as Gretchen mentioned, you'll see in the third column to, to the, from the left, the average score. So the highest score possible is 90. And so the organization that scored 72 is, it's 72 out of 90. And as Gretchen also mentioned, if you move over to where it's a score over 100 or out of 100, we convert that highest score, 72 out of 90, to a score over 100, which makes it 80. So we really were converting it to a percentage. And so this, uh, this score over 100 or out of 100 eventually becomes the percent that we are recommending we fund each applicant to. And so just to clarify, if you move across the sheet to the right, you'll see recommended percentage of request is 80%. This organization requested the max from us $20,000. So 80% of the max is $16,000. And so we apply the same formula going all the way down. So it's completely objective that every organization applicant is, is funded based on, on the percentage. And there's, we do, we didn't create any sort of deviation. All of the organizations, these are the first. This is part of recommendation, the first recommendation. So we would fund the first 11 organizations. And that would total this amount here, $168,958. The reason we cut it off at 11 is because you'll see the variance in this column here and that the variance between applicant 11 and applicant 12 is 2.4 points. And so that's a pretty significant, it's the first significant break that we see. And so the, as I said, the first recommendation or Scenario A is that we fund the first 11 organizations. And we do have the option, should we so choose, to include the next two organizations, number 12 and number 13. And that would mean for this particular cohort, we would need $200,231 to fund from organizations one through 13. And again, the reason we cut off between 13 and 14 is again, there's a pretty significant break, 2.4 variance between 13 and 14. Does anybody have any questions about the, how we got to this or before we look at the out-of-school time?
David, I think this is the, I don't have the corrected version. I have for 12, the 23,000 rather than 20.
Right. And that is correct. When Rona and I met, she spotted that this one organization, number 12, requested more than the total request amount. So were we to include number 12, this, the percentage would be 71.3% would be of the 20,000 rather than the 23,000, the, the amount. So this, this 17,006 figure will go down. So we will adjust that should we decide to go with Scenario B. Thanks, Rona. Anybody get any questions about how we got to up to this?
Yeah, we're just looking at this one section now, the in-school vote. Depending on whether or not there are questions on this particular section.
I don't necessarily have a question, but I, I think there needs to be a little bit deeper dive into the formula. Because you have a $5 million organization getting the same as a $300,000 organization. And then I see the organization number nine, that's 151, they're getting less than the $5 million organization. So when we talk about equity, we talk about the distribution of funding to the people who need it the most. And so I just want to make sure we're acknowledging the fact that a $5 million organization is getting more than someone who has a $151,000 budget. And then that's what Cora talked about earlier, about how the same people are getting access to more money and less, and there's less opportunities for people who have smaller organizations getting access.
So I, I take your point, Quanise. It is, you know, a more complicated or complex in that these are project-based grants and not general operating support grants. As was referenced earlier with the COC organizations. And one of the reasons why we decided to open up this particular cohort to organizations that receive general operating support and identify as arts and arts education organizations is because arts education organizations will never matriculate into a national capital arts cohort because they're not performing as is. So no matter the size of their budget, they will just never have that opportunity. So this was an opportunity to, you know, be more inclusive and for those organizations. We also made, you know, when the, the decision was made in the spring to limit the East of the River Grants exclusively to East of the River organizations. I was, I was frankly really concerned about, you know, organizations that happen to have a, an address, an administrative address west of the city, but to implement, you know, the vast majority of their programming east of the river, that those organizations and the children they serve would be disenfranchised. So Khalid and I made an intentional effort to identify those organizations and make sure that they knew they could no longer apply to East of the River and so they should migrate to the arts education program, to be sure that they wouldn't be left out in the cold. So, you know, we, we do try to, you know, identify, I know a lot of the arts education organizations. And so we do try to, you know, bring them into the fold and that's, you know, probably we've, you know, you know, we're hoping to fund at a higher level in this grant or this year than we have the previous three years.
Yeah, that's understandable. I, I, I know it's not general operating, but a, a organization that has a $5 million budget has access to funding. So if we never gave them money, they could find money somewhere else versus a, a organization with a $151,000 budget. So I do understand.
How do you know that, Quanise? How do you, how can you make a general statement like that? I'm just curious without knowing what the other elements of their budget is.
So do you think a $20,000 budget, they wouldn't be able to find any other place? Wouldn't they have a $5 million budget altogether? They could, they're, they have funders. There are funders out there that they already have. That's why it's a $5 million organization.
But this is a project-based grant.
I'm not saying don't fund them. I'm saying we need to look a little bit more equitably at the numbers. I'm not saying don't fund any programs. You know, I'm an arts ed advocate. This is what I do for a living. I get paid for this work. So, but we need to look at these numbers a little bit better because it seems like we're not, we're not focusing on the equity part. Like I understand the formula is there, but I still think that equity piece is missing.
Point, point well taken, Quanise. Thank you. Uh, can we go on to, we haven't even looked at out, let's look at out-of-school.
And, and just as a reminder too, so this, the project-based grants are open to non-art's organizations. So these are not all arts organizations. Some of them, that's what they do. They're arts education organizations, they're arts organizations. And, and some of them are, you know, intersect with the arts in a different way. So we have some health and human services organizations. You know, community ministries, that type of thing. So yeah, just to remind folks of that. So with the out-of-school time cohort, we had, so we had 20 applicants to the in-school and 25 applicants to the out-of-school time cohort. And again, the section in white, numbers one to 14 is Scenario A where we would, if we funded the 14, we would fund them to the tune of $227,859. And if we went with Scenario B, we would add 15, 16, and 17 down here and then we would need $261,970 to, to include those. Similarly, the green cell that you see, there was a very natural break between number 14 and number 15 of 3.5. There's not so much of a natural break between 17 and 18. But the reason I pulled the line down was that because there were more applicants in this particular cohort, the total of 25. And so I sort of wanted to make sure that we were funding both cohorts sort of proportionally.
That makes sense.
But David, you should also tell them about what we discussed this morning about the, the budget that we have and why we cut it off at 11 and 14.
Oh, right. So if you scroll down to the very bottom of the page, Patrick, and I just sort of summarized Scenario A and Scenario B. So as I said, if we went with Scenario A, we would fund 11 in-school, 14 out-of-school and need $396,000. And then if we funded Scenario B, we would fund a total of 13 organizations for in-school and 17 for out-of-school. And that figure, we changed it slightly based on the, and the piece that Rona noticed earlier. So it's $459,000. The, this figure of the $396,000 is much closer to the figure that we had budgeted in the spring. So, and the reason that we're recommending it is that we feel more comfortable with this figure and the, the figure associated with Scenario B.
David, this is Mariah. I'm just wondering, so you are recommending Scenario B. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm recommending Scenario A.
Oh, you're recommending A. Okay.
It's still significantly more than we funded. And so Patrick, do you mind going back to the Word document, the funding rationale, just on the first page of it? If you can go up to
Yeah, back to that. Thank you. Yep.
So what, um, when all of your arts education organizations migrated to the GOS grants, the general operating support grant, and we actually, it took us a while to calibrate. And so for three years, FY 2017 included, we were funding this category at about $300,000 for each of those years. And then last year or this current year, the tail end of this current year, FY 20, and we dropped to 218. So, you know, even funding scenario at the Scenario A level, 396 is, as you can see, it's about $180,000 higher than the amount we funded, you know, this year and, you know, about $100,000 more than we funded in the previous couple of years. So I think it's sort of, it's healthy enough. And when, you know, I went back and looked at the applications that would have been included in Scenario B and the comments of the panelists and, you know, they were not the strongest applications. And so I think they, they landed where they landed for a reason. Did you have another question, Mariah? Sorry.
No, I think that, I think that that answers it. I mean, of course, I would like to fund as more people. But if, if you're, if you feel that it makes sense that you're recommending it differently, then I can appreciate that.
The, um, it's, I'm, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, really great programming is going into the schools or, or, you know, people are exposed to it. So that is excellent, that it is quality. And we, we ask the applicants to define what quality and excellence is for them. It's not sort of a one-size-fits-all. But we do want to make sure that young people are getting the best programs. And that the organizations have the ability to work with the school system because now more than ever, they have to be able to interface with the schools and understand, understand the needs of the schools, particularly if it's an in-school program and they're, they're bringing programming in either virtually or hopefully person at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think, is there some, there's something else on this page? Is that it?
We thought on this particular one before going forward.
Yeah, but I wanted to make, I have a right award justification section on my, was there another, can you go down a little bit more, please? Yeah, there we go. That's the rest of it.
Right. And that was really the explanation, but about the cutoffs and the variances and so on for both Scenario A and Scenario B.
Right.
David?
Yes, Alma?
Under Scenario A, I guess, how many of the 15 new applicants were funded?
And we can, Patrick, if you go back to the Excel spreadsheet. We don't tend to get a lot of new folks in this category. And you can see here, if you look at a column over here, previous A H E P grantee. You can see which ones have been in this program in, in the past. Now, what this column does not show is that any of the organizations that migrated to this category from East of the River. And East of the River and Arts Education are the ones that have the most overlap because East of the River is such, so broad that it includes a lot of programming for children and youth. So I don't know off the top of my head, but organization number 11, for example, or, or, sorry, 12, I beg your pardon, which is a no, that organization very well could have been an East of the River organization that had not applied to, or an organization that had previously applied to East of the River, but had never applied to arts education. So that's why it's a no in that. Or it could be brand new to us. The, and if you, I know, I, I do not to give away any names, but Patrick, if you scroll up to the very top. but, uh, Patrick, if you scroll up to the very top. So the organization that landed at the top of the in-school cohort is a brand-new organization to us. And they, uh, they applied to us last year and they did not put forth a very, very strong application at all. And they acknowledged that. And I worked with them during the year, as I do with all of the applicants and grantees, to, you know, give them guidance on how to submit a strong application and what sort of support materials and work samples and so on, to include. They listened to me. And they went from the bottom of the cohort last year to the very top of the cohort this year. So, so it's an arts education success story.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. I, I want to acknowledge a comment that, um, Quanies made in the chat. And that's about not having gotten this information, which is a lot to review. Um, soon enough, I think it was only sent out late this morning. So I want to apologize for that. Um, and we're obviously going to do better next time.
Yes, Gretchen, definite, most definitely. Yeah, we'll, we should put our grants committee meetings on a calendar further in advance. So we make sure that we have everything tied into place. So I echo your apology and we will, we will do better.
I, if I could also add, and in format other than the zip, which I could not access at all. And if it wasn't for David sending it, sending me these, these documents separately, I would not have any of this information. So I think that there has to be a way that we send the information so that people can access it.
Well, Mary, because of the, there were so many files in this particular one, let me finish, please. There's so many files in this. We can either do it zip filed, or we can do a Dropbox. If you're uncomfortable with that, then we'll just have to make an exception for you. But the best way to get the files to everybody is either Dropbox or zip. But if you can't access those, then we'll just fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I think, are there any other questions about this? We're not going to go to the other grant yet. We want to take a vote on this one first, Kay.
So if you want to recommend this vote, Gretchen.
I'm, okay. I was going to move that we accept both cohorts in and out of school and vote for, um, option A as recommended by David.
This is a second.
Okay, great, you are. Thank you. Um, Alma?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes. A.
Uh, Mariah?
Yes, A.
Mary Ann?
Yes, A.
Jose?
A.
Okay, Derek?
Yes, A.
Rona?
Yes, A.
Cece?
Yes.
Thank you, Quanies.
Quanies had to step out.
Thank you. Stacy?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Cora? Just in case she come back. Kimber? Okay, um, it passed by a good majority. So, thank you, Gretchen. Do you want to move forward?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, we're now going to move to the larger category, which is AHFP. In front of you, you have the funding recommendation sheet. And we'll do this one just as we did before. I'll go through, um, the recommendations and the rationale, and then David will take us through the specific sheet. I'm sorry, Kevin. This is Kevin's baby. Okay, this is the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. It includes dance, design for the first-time logo, humanities, media, music, visual arts, teaching artists, and theater. This program supports individual artists, teaching artists, and humanities professionals who significantly contribute to the arts and humanities and substantially impact the lives of DC residents through excellence in the arts and humanities. Um, we are again going to ask you to choose, um, an FY, with the, um, options that we have, the allocated budget amount for FY 2021 in scenario A, where we award 316 applicants, scenario B, where we award 289 applicants. And you can see how it compares to 20 and to 19. So actually, we are awarding more money to people, which is wonderful. Um, in terms of the, the panels by cohorts, we had one panel in dance, one design, one go-go, three humanities, two media, two music, um, one teaching artist, two theater, and five visual artists. Um, I want to, first of all, thank, I say this all the time, but if there are any panelists on this call, thank you so very much for participating. This was a big panel, a lot to do. And thanks so much for all of the commissioner conveners. We had 21 applicants in dance, 20 in design, four in go-go, 75 humanities, 37 media, 67 music, 19 teaching artists, theater, 69, and visual artists, 154. So we had 466 applicants, whereas in FY 20, we had 397. So again, this is increased. You can see the names of the grants managers. Again, thank you to all of them. This has been a lot of work when everybody's part. And don't think for one moment we don't appreciate it. The commissioner conveners have to take times out from their busy schedules. And again, thank them. Can we scroll up a little bit more? Okay, um, this particular program features the new GoGo Musicians cohort, which we have never had before. Um, in FY 21, we received 69 more applications over FY 20, a 17% increase. And I think this is just phenomenal in terms of getting the word out to more people and getting those people and their applications in. Of the 466 applicants, 148 are entirely new to the commission this year, and that is phenomenal. Okay, let's keep going. Okay, um, we have a scenario A and, um, the scenario B. Um, David, do you want to talk through this? We can come back to this one, but I'd rather you look at this while we're looking at the other sheet.
I think Kevin is going to take the lead on this. To push it on to me.
I never know, Kevin, sorry. And I got to tell you guys something. Uh, I told Kevin, when he first started, uh, working with us on this, he had some sheets that looked like, it's like, oh my God, we're back in school at MIT. We are, we are finally, we finally gotten it after, I don't know how many meetings and how many phone calls. We think everybody can understand this. So we will entertain as many questions as you have about it. So can we go to the next slide, um, Patrick? So that Kevin can walk us through it.
I gotta say, Gretchen, for a, uh, for a prior theater and English major, that is high praise. So, I think.
My techie, though, I think, techie schools, okay.
Um, uh, thanks, yeah. And I, I know, I'll do, uh, I'm happy to do a walkthrough through it. Hi, everyone. My name is Kevin. Um, and I haven't met a number of you. I'm, uh, I'm part of the grants management team here. I'm one of the grants program managers. Um, so last year, just to, because I know some people are maybe coming to this for the first time and may not be as familiar with the fellows. So just kind of want to reiterate that last year, we ended up awarding about 272 applicants. Um, and with so many people, um, one grant manager can't do all of this. And so this is very much a collaborative effort. Um, so I, I, I speak with, you know, the, the, the team's support, at least as far as I know. Um, so there were a couple of things that we were factoring in this year. An apologies for the background noise. I've got a, uh, I've got a 10-month-old and a three-year-old in the background. So they are causing some havoc.
Noise is coming from you, Kevin.
I know, I know. Um, so I'll, and I'll try to, I'll try to do my best to speak over it. But, um, so there were two things that, that factor into this that we, that we didn't talk about and don't concern, um, AHEP, the program that we reviewed earlier. Um, one of them is that this is not project-based. These are, uh, these are awards that we call the equivalent of individual GOS. Um, and then the other one is the, is the charge this year to try to increase that floor, that minimum, um, payment to $5,000. Last year, for frame of reference, the minimum award that went out to a grantee was $2,500. And just for your, for your edification too, the second tier of that award was $3,750. So $5,000 actually raises the floor from, uh, from two positions of what it was last year, which is very impressive. But scenario A, um, is, uh, i- it funds more people. It funds at 316. Um, and roughly maintains the rate of funding from last year. Um, as you can see on the left on your screen, um, the way that we allocate the funds for this, and actually, um, uh, Patrick, it may be easier to explain this if we go back to the Word document for just a second. So, and if you can scroll down just a hair, thanks, perfect, right there. So the way that this is allocated is, uh, there were 19.
Excuse me, everybody, please mute your phone except for Kevin. Thank you.
Thanks, Gretchen. Um, there were 19 panels. Um, and I think about 95 different panelists that were all coming to this with, uh, with different scoring criteria and practices. Um, and so to find a way to unify all of these scores, what we did was, uh, create a percentile ranking for all of the applicants. So generally speaking, if you're an applicant that comes out at the very top, um, of your cohort, you're ranked at 100%. And if you came out at the very bottom, you're ranked at 0%. And everybody falls in between, regardless of how many people are in the panel. From that percentage, we came up with this tiered structure that you see on your screen. Um, and this is for scenario A. So again, that top-ranking person gets 10,000. Um, if you come up in the 90th percentile, which is probably the next few people, then we would recommend $9,000 and so on down. Um, and the, and that asterisk that you see right there, so what I just described is the formula. And the formula is pretty draconian. A formula doesn't necessarily care if, uh, if one applicant comes a hundredth of a point behind another. But obviously, from a panelist's perspective, they see those two people as equal. Um, that is a very tiny margin. And so that's where the grants managers went back to the panel notes and went back to the scores and, and, and distilled what the panelist intent was. And in this situation, in scenario A, we're trying to be more inclusive and include those people that would otherwise be excluded from a more stringent formula. Um, so, uh, in recognition of, of that and their placement, we would further recommend that these people be funded at about $4,000, um, which again, is still much higher from, from the lowest funding of last year. Um, and so that's pretty much how it's allocated. If we can, uh,
Next section, so everybody can see that breakout.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, Patrick, if you scroll down just a second.
Yeah.
And if the percentiles don't make sense to a lot of people, I totally get it. But this is just sort of the hard numbers that we were looking at. Um, so high scores in dance, that first item there, 87.4, it's a really high score. A perfect score is 90. Um, and a low score for dance within this funding criteria, and again, this is just formula-based, is 75.2. A low, the lowest score you can get is a zero. So 75 is still very good. Um, by contrast, if you look over at the second column, but midway down, if you see theater three, the lowest score given in this scenario, and again, this is all formula-based, is a 50. It's just indicative of a, of a harder scoring panel, um, although that person fell in the exact same ranking as the equivalent person in dance. So with such a variance of numbers, we're trying to find something to drive us through. And that's how we created the percentile structure. And that's, and, and for you information, it's the same structure that we used in FY 20 as well. Um, so how this all manifests, Patrick, if you can go to the other document, thank you. Um, so the number of awardees in each one of those tiered structures, and if there's any way to zoom in, just a hair on this, you might be able to get up to maybe like 105%.
Yep, there we go.
Okay. Um, so yeah, on the left there, what you're looking at are the number of awardees that would come out in each one of these, uh, 80/20's tiers. Um, and so this, uh, scenario A is, is very equal among all the, all the awardees and all the tiers, with the exception, of course, of the people who, who wouldn't end up being funded. Um, awards by discipline, um, is that center column there. Uh, and if you can scroll down just a hair, Patrick. So what you'll see here are a couple of things I just want to highlight for you. The blue cell there is obviously the overall budget impact of, uh, of all of these awards that would go out as, as designed. The funding percentage is, uh, 67.8% of applicants, which is again very similar to last year. Um, but the average award, although there isn't the context of last year here, is an increase of $999 from last year. So by raising the floor of the awards, such as it is, um, it would make a really big impact for the folks that end up being ultimate grantees here. And then if you can kind of scroll, uh, to the, to the right there, all the way over. This is the breakdown of, uh, of proposed awards by ward here. Um, and there's two columns here. One of them is, is reflective of the overall applicant pool. And then the other one is reflective of who would ultimately be awarded under this scenario, um, and the percentage is therein. Below that is the, is the total number of applicants. And this too is really interesting. In this particular scenario, we would be funding over 50% of our first-time applicants. And these are first-time, these are not first-time fellowship applicants. These are first-time commission applicants. And so that's a, that's a pretty neat feature for us.
Okay, um, let's go back to the other sheet, please. I know I'm making you guys dizzy with this, but it's kind of the only way we can talk through it.
It worked, uh, indeed, Gretchen and Kevin and David and all the whole brand team. Incredible. That's a lot of work. Thank you.
You wouldn't believe, we started off one day with a call in the morning and we finally finished, finished with our last call, starting at 5:00 PM. So I got to give it to everybody. This was a lot of work and a lot of dedication to work through the what-ifs and change the formulas and tweak this, that, and the other, but.
Amazing, amazing. I realize that because I've seen applications and it is incredible. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And herod for the.
Okay, scenario C.
I missed the question.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are there questions? Does everybody, we, wait a minute, did we finish going all the way through scenario B?
Put it on the floor before we get into questions. The procedure should be that we make the recommendation for a vote, second it, and then we'll have the question.
I know, but we haven't finished this. This needs to go up a little bit. We haven't finished page. Patrick?
You just wanted to go to the. Chart, yeah.
Back to the other page, but all the way at the bottom. Oh dear.
Uh, sorry, just, I had zoomed out. Um, you said the first, this page, right?
Yeah, we're on the explanation page. Yep, and we're at the end of scenario B. So you have an A and a B, and now you can see the breakout for B.
In scenario B, um, it took, it took a little, we took a lot of time to walk through scenario A because we talked about the practice and how we put these numbers together. Um, scenario B, the, the, the method is the same, but the breaks are different. And so we don't have to walk through all of these, the, these features again, um, because they look, they look similar just where the numbers fell. Um, so scenario B is, uh, with a lower funding amount, uh, which has the effect of, uh, awarding a smaller number of people. So 289 as opposed to the 316. Um, how that happens is that the percentiles have changed a little bit. So instead of ending at the 40th percentile, it ends at the 41st. And the grant managers were a little bit more stringent in looking at that panelist feedback. Um, and not quite as forgiving to, uh, extend into, into what the panelist's feedback was. Um, but much more hewing closer to, to the lines and the natural breaks really close to that 41st percentile. Um, if you can scroll down just a little bit more, Patrick. And if you have the printout in front of you, this is kind of, it would be kind of helpful to, to be able to compare. Um, because you'll notice, and obviously, the high score stays the same on each one of these cohorts. But the low score is going to be a little bit different because again, that we were, the grant managers were a little bit more stringent in looking at the panelist's feedback. And so most of these numbers end up being a little bit higher, um, because the cutoff range is, is going to be a little bit higher for, for, again, most of these cohorts. Um, and then scroll down a little bit more for me. Thank you. Um, so in this scenario, uh, this would fund 17 more people than were funded in FY 20, so still an increase. Um, scenario A again funds about 44 more people than FY 20. Um, first-time applicants would be funded at roughly 48%, as opposed to just over 50. Um, and the average award goes up, um, by a thousand dollars, um, here as well. So, uh, so that remains very, the same, uh, in each scenario. And if we wanted to just take a look at the, uh, at the, the chart and how that looks visually. And if we wanted to just take a look at the, at the chart and how that looks visually. I'm going to scroll down a little bit. Perfect. So here, because of the, the way that the funding was structured, there are quite a few more people included at that bottom tier, that 5,000. But you know, again, you know, a, a nice distribution throughout all of the tiers. The numbers for each one of the cohorts, each one of the disciplines have decreased proportionally. In this scenario, we're funding at about 62% of applicants. And again, that's relative to about the 68% that we did last year. And if we want to scroll over to the far side of this sheet and down just a hair to include that last box, great. You can see what the breakdown looks like according to board. This is much more hewing again, close to that formula and closer to that higher, slightly higher percentile. And you can see how it varies a little bit from the ward perspective. And I think that's it. I think that's the full description for the two scenarios, unless of course there are questions.
Gretchen, do you want to make a recommendation that we vote on one? We'll put it on the table for more discussion.
I prefer questions right now. Is that the right way to do this?
No, it's not.
All right.
It's supposed to nominate it first and then ask the questions.
Okay, I'm going to recommend scenario A.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
Now questions. Natalie?
Okay, so of the total people that applied, I mean, do we have an idea of how many people started the process and weren't able to finish it for, for whatever reason?
Oh, you're talking about how many were actually vetted from the, from the total amount of applicants, how many finished the vetting process?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just looking at GoGo, for instance, there's only four applications. So was it that more people applied and they didn't make it all the way, they didn't complete their applications, or like, so, and I'm just trying to get an idea.
This is David, I was just going to jump in. We can, we can pull a total number of complete applications.
Excuse me, put phones on mute, people, please.
Yeah, Alma, Alma, we can hear the packet. We need to, yeah, thanks. Okay, go ahead, David.
So we can hold it up, I can pull that number and let you know that of the, you know, number of those who complete, who submitted complete applications, we can also let you know the number of what they call incomplete. And I can pull that pretty quickly for each of the cohorts. So I just, yeah, and I can do that. I can send that out to you, Natalie.
Okay, great, thank you. We're actually going to be looking at those types of things. David and I talked about this before with Iran. And we're going to be looking at those really across a lot of the grants to find out how many people did not process and why they didn't complete it, so that we can figure out what we need to tweak.
But if my memory serves, Gretchen, I think all of the applicants for GoGo that applied have been considered. And so this is the total number that we're looking at.
I think it was only four, that somewhere.
That's what I remember too, yeah.
But I, but as I said, we're going to be looking at this, Natalie, not just for this one, but all through it just to, to make sure. But I think there were only four. I was surprised, but at least we got three out of four.
And we also extended the deadline. Usually it's a four-week window, and we extended the, the window for fellowship applicants to five weeks. So we could only do so much because we were working with a truncated summer, trying to cram 32 panels into the best part of six to eight weeks and to try and still meet that October 1st deadline to announce awards.
Yeah. It was a lot.
Are there any other questions? If not, we can take a vote, and this is voting to support the recommendation of scenario A.
Right.
Alma?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Mariah? Mariah, are you still there?
Both of us, yes.
Okay, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Jose?
A. Yes, A.
Thank you. Derek? Derek?
Yeah.
Thank you. Rona?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Quinny's?
Quinny's had to go.
Thank you. Stacy?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Cora's gone and Kimber's gone. Okay, a good majority. Thank you so much, everybody. I think that, I think the results were excellent. We're, we're funding more than before and more generously, and I think that's always a good thing.
I really want to thank everyone again. I know this was a lot to review in such a short period of time, and I really appreciate everybody's indulgence in it. And again, we are going to do better next time.
Is there any new business? Okay, if that's the case. The agenda says adjourn at 5:30, and we're just six minutes over. That's amazing. Good prediction. Thank you all for coming to the meeting. Thank you for sticking with us. The next meeting is Thursday, October 15th. That's just three weeks. We'll see you then. Thank you.